Welcome to the tonight's planning commission of City of Series. It's Monday, October 2nd, 2023. This meeting is being held in person also on Zoom. Would everybody please rise and pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, please note that Commissioner Otero is excused this evening. So we have Commissioner Del Nero, Commissioner Jamu,
President.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yep.
Chairperson Katchel.
Here. There's some chairs up in the front for those in the back who are standing. There's several chairs still available. Okay, conflict of interest declaration. Does any one on the commission have any conflicts with anything on tonight's agenda?
Nope.
Okay, seeing nothing, we'll move on to citizens communication. This is for matters which are not included on the agenda. While the planning commission welcomes and encourages participation, planning commission meetings adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and not on the post-agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the planning commission from taking action on any matter that's not on the post-agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the commission. Citizens are entitled to address the commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on, under citizens communication? Please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand, request to speak using the hand icon at the bottom right of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press nine on your phone. Names will be called, the order, the requests are received, and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Do we have any Zoom participants?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, and clerk, have we received any public comments through email?
No, we have not.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. There's two items on that calendar. The first is the clerk's report of posting, and the second would be approval of the minutes for September 5th if all members were present at that meeting. So can we get an action on that from the commission, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, we call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
And now we're at the item that I imagine most of you are here for, and that would be item three on our agenda. That's conditional use permit thirteen dash twelve CUP as amended. Consideration of El Ramatito Flea Market's conditional use permit amendment or previously approved conditional use permit for the following proposed changes Nelson Gomez applicant. The changes include A, add accessor partial numbers to the use permit and add gravel parking services on both of those two parcels, which are adjacent to the existing use. Streamline the permitting of onsite special events to a predetermined set of conditions. Update reporting requirements for the business licenses and sales tax. And D, provide a traffic mitigation plan. The current status of its project is exempt from CECA for existing facilities. And with that introduction, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. This is Christopher Home. I'm the community development director for Series. The staff report is as follows. On October 3rd of last year, the planning commission provided a 12-month extension to El Ramatito Flea Market for their use permit. The plan for that was to allow time for staff to bring. One thing in particular that was important was to bring forward a municipal code update for parking ordinance to allow for overflow parking to be gravelled. This is something that would help various sites in the city, including El Ramatito. Staff brought that forward to planning commission on March 6th of this year, and the city council of Series adopted the parking ordinance changes on April 24th of this year. Those changes provided a path forward for El Ramatito to submit an application to amend their conditional use permit to expand their area into that dirt lot that they own next to the main site in order to gravel it for overflow parking. We received an amendment request on September 8th from the El Ramatito applicant, and we put together the staff report. As we got nearer to the meeting, there were some questions that we needed answers to, and we were missing some various documents from El Ramatito, some maps and site plans that we need in order to move forward with this. So what staff is recommending at this time is to continue this item and extend it to December 4th of this year.
Any questions from the commission at this point? I may have some, but I'll wait till we have here from the applicant. May not need to answer, ask them. At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? We're not here to judge the pros and cons of the permit itself, simply to continue it to a later meeting, the first meeting in December, which would be, I think, four meetings from now, so that the applicant can submit the rest of the needed information, make the application complete, and it can then be evaluated and brought back for a decision. So tonight, all we're doing is deciding whether to continue it or not. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. And please, anyone wanting to speak, please come forward, state your name, and tell us what you have to say.
John Warren, City of Series. In regards to the extension, the application, I have a couple of questions. Approximately one year ago, application that process was extended for one year so they could prepare all the documents necessary. Took about six months for the city to change the ordinance or ordinance gravel surface. But in that same time period, I have a question as to if the other conditions that were as a traffic plan. Traffic plan doesn't have anything to do with site plan. Also, the update regarding the reporting requirement, business licenses and sales tax. Each business that rents a spot business license. And/or the market pays a fee to the city for each day that that particular vendor is there. Also, as each is selling their products out, 100 of them or 500 of them, each one of them has to collect sales tax. So there's supposed to be an update in that reporting process. I've asked several times. Never received any information if these fees and taxes are being collected. So before any extension is granted, I want to know if these items are in place, and they should be. The only thing that this is addressing is the fact that site map is needed to complete this. That's just basically where things. So that would be my question. If those things aren't completed, the traffic plan and all these other things, then the extension should not be granted. They've had a year to do that.
Okay, we'll respond to that a little bit later then. Or would you rather do it now?
Yeah, so some of the things that you're bringing up are still being considered. For example, the, and some of them have already been accomplished. The applicant did provide some traffic information. The applicant did show us documentation that the per vendor per day B was, has been sent to the city in line with the conditions of approval. But not everything could be evaluated yet because we didn't have a complete package that was submitted to us on September 8th. That's why we're trying to work with the applicant here and extend it to December 4th.
Okay, thank you. In other words, at this point, the application is not complete, and that's what we're waiting for. And those were the items I went over earlier, the things that we're trying to put together in a package to bring for an approval or denial of the project itself. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Timmy Avila. He received a lift on Carol Lane. Regardless, the tax thing that he was talking about was pretty important. But I think what most of us today are worried about is whether our street is going to be used as access for the parking facility El Ramatito is trying to set up.
I don't know the answer to your question, but I would presume that would be part of the traffic circulation plan, which is going to be have to made developed as a part of the project before it comes forward. Tonight, we don't have the answer to a lot of those questions. We're still waiting.
Of course. So basically, they have to make a plan for the parking and then bring it up here again to get it approved?
Yeah, as I as I read earlier, they're asking to do four things, basically. One, add two different parcels to the use, existing use permit area and apply gravel parking services to both of those parcels. Second, streamline the permitting for onsite special events with a predetermined set of conditions. And it's my understanding from the staff report that there's a, some sort of gathering hall or social hall that it's being proposed. So we don't know what that'll include or how that will operate yet. Update reporting requirements for business licenses and sales tax. That was alluded to earlier and responded to briefly. And again, that will be part of the project going forward. And then fourth, item D, provide a traffic management plan, which would indicate how people are getting in, how they're getting out, whether it's in daytime or if some of these social events are nighttime events, how will it circulate then? Will it be any different? We don't know any of that yet. So right now, all we're talking about is continuing it for another 60 days to allow the applicant to complete their application and bring it back with hopefully answers to your questions, our questions, his questions, and any other questions that we have.
Okay, okay. So I guess there's no answer to that yet.
Not yet.
I mean, that's how it is, so.
That's what we're waiting for.
And if well, let's say that people don't want to let them keep the extension, then what would happen then? They have to like shut down? Would be, I'm sure probably that wouldn't happen, but.
I don't know how to answer that question at this point. First, we need to have an application that's complete and then evaluate it and see where we go from there. I just don't know at this point.
Okay, okay, that sounds.
It's getting ahead, it's getting ahead of things too much, I think.
Thank you.
Stick with us. Yes, sir.
Dale Ketner on Carol Lane. This question in the West Pacific negotiations that we did for annexation. Patients were considering for the new. There'll be no through traffic at the end of Carol Lane for emergency vehicles. Edit, it's in the all public. Somebody gonna try to change that. Any traffic, through traffic on Carol?
Thank you, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward.
And Chairperson Katchel? Yes, sir. I'd just like to point out that staff hasn't received any recommendation or suggestion that Carol Lane be used for any part of the circulation. So that's not something that we're considering.
Okay, good to hear.
Yeah, my name's Alan, I'm also a resident of Carol. My question would be, sir, coming on December 4th, that's when we would come up and speak our concern.
Yeah, and also you can email staff between now and then, and we'll make that part of the record.
If I needed.
Okay.
Us residents will be back on December 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak? Nelson Gomez on behalf of the applicant. If anybody else wants to speak, but I'll be happy to answer a lot of it.
First, first of all, I want to make sure that the black, the traffic plan for parking parking for El Ramatito does not include any egress or ingress or egress from Carol Lane. It is all coming from Pedro Marcus Avenue and going.
You get a lot of odds behind you there.
There is not going to be any kind of, of, there is no traffic plan that would call for any gap to Carol Lane.
Okay.
First of all, I want to make sure that the commission understands the following. There is in place a conditional use permit. El Ramatito was, had a conditional use permit before he was annexed to the city with the county of San Antonio. Then, when that particular parcel was annexed to the city, then the applicant in subject to the city of San Antonio relations, and in 2015, they obtain a conditional use for El Ramatito under the City of Series. Okay? That particular conditional use permit was amended in the year 2020 for to permit additional uses of the business of the site, particularly for a grub hub, what do we call a truck, mobile vendors park. And put on certain other conditions for for El Ramatito to be able by with some reporting requirements. I want to make sure it's clear that it's not something that was just barely recently issued, something that is going to be, that is just now come on scene. It's something that has been done a long period of time. In that particular conditions, both in 2015, between 2015 and 2020, the applicant, El Ramatito, invested approximately $3 million to upgrade the part, their parcel, as well as the surrounding streets. For example, there was an expansion of Rose Landing Road. There was this traffic signal that was put on that new street, Pedro Marcus Avenue. There was a paving of approximately 965 new parking spaces. There was beautification required by the city of that site. Anyone that has gone and seen the property realized that this is probably the best flea market in the state of California in terms of appearance. So they have complied with all kinds of requirements from fire to all kinds of other requirements that have been from this particular business. With regards to the traffic plan, the traffic plan that we're talking about is primarily a traffic plan provide for traffic in peak hours, at peak times of the year. In this particular, there is a, perhaps a traffic impingement on Rose Landing Road. Right? So we have already provided for a traffic plan how to deal with the traffic when this particular expanded parcel that is going to be for overflow parking will be utilized. So we've provided that with the engineers rendering to the city of Series, which provides for ingress for Pedro Marcus Avenue, one-way exit on that road. That has been already provided. But what I'm trying to say to you tonight, that we're more than prepared to go forward on December the 4th. But it's not because we haven't provided a incomplete application, but rather that we've amended our application in order to try to be precise and bring less-ish items to the table. However, I want to make clear that all of the conditions that this Ramatito has had, has been working under in the current conditional use have been complied. Are being complied today, have been complied for years. The city of Series is receiving the money for daily usage by their vendors under that particular. The city of Series is working with the applicant by with a lot of things. But I want to make sure that the public understands that within this year, it's not that the applicant has just said, hey, I'm not going to do anything, or I'm not, I'm going to wait until the last minute. Was a period of time during which the city, as Mr. Christopher Home has indicated, city amended their overflow parking ordinance. Right? That took approximately, like he said, six months to be able to do so. He could not apply, come to you before that because there was no provision in the municipal code for us to be able to come to you and say we want overflow parking under what kinds of conditions. Now that the city council has adopted amendments to that ordinance, now we have proposed to the city to that this overflow parking by with every one of those particular items in the current city municipal. There's also been another issue. Issue of food vendors, mobile food vendors in the city of Series. This issue has been a hot potato with the city council for the last four or six months. There's been public meetings, there have been other kinds of things. The issue has come before the planning, excuse me, the city council, so forth. I believe that the matter is going to, going to come to the city council again for final adoption. And so we've been looking at that to try to comply with those particular regulations when we apply for a continuation of the construction of the grub hub at El Ramatito. So what we want you to know is that we've been working with staff diligently to try to obtain clarification on many issues so that we can be able to provide both the planning commission and the city council with an application that will not only comply with the Series Municipal Code, but also be just an amendment of the current conditional use permit. What we are asking you is to just extend the current conditional use permit has been in place since 2015 for a period of two months in order for us to submit items and things that the city staff has properly brought to our attention that we would like to be able to comply with on or before the appropriate time so you can have the full picture to consider it on December 4th. But I want to make sure that it's clear, both to the planning commission and to the public, that everything that we are asking is either under the conditions of the current conditional use permit or things that are permitted for us to ask of the city planning commission and the city of Series order to be able to expand or clarify the types of uses and services that can be provided by El Ramatito. And I'm ready, I'm open for you if any of you has any questions.
Two months be sufficient to come up with that package?
Yes, we believe, we, we set a timetable just October the 23rd, which Mr. Home and I have spoken about. We are going to provide whatever else clarifications we need and so forth on or before October 23rd in order for you folks to have a proper package to consider on December.
That meets your time constraints for preparation for the meeting in December? I guess you can answer every, everything. Thank you.
I appreciate your time, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have or any questions the audience may have that are relevant what we're asking for. I want to make sure that the planning commission understands that the current conditional use permit requires the applicant to have 1,493 paved parking spaces. The applicant currently has 1,865 parking spaces, fairly far exceeding the required number of parkings, or, excuse me, paved parking spaces onsite currently.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? Please come forward to state your name in your comments.
Puzlinda Viera, and I think it's geared more towards. Her date is that going to? So they're in compliance ordinance that's going to be at least the first. That was my only question. I don't want to have something posed before you, and then we change the ordinance or out of compliance.
That's a good question. The first reading of the food truck ordinance is planned on October 23rd. The second reading, if all goes well, and for November 13th. At that second reading, that's when the city council could, if they choose to adopt that ordinance, it becomes effective 30 days after that. So if we have the planning commission meeting on December 4th, it will be during that 30-day period. And one of the conditions that can be applied be to wait for December 13th before allowing any changes to the food truck setup at El Ramatito, if there is going to be one. So there should, it should be fine. It should work out just fine.
City attorney, do you have any comment on that?
I don't at this time. It's not a matter for this hearing right now.
Okay, just trying to avoid a problem in the future. Yes, Mr. Gomez?
I just wanted to indicate that applicant and myself have been very much involved in the public meetings and the public, not only at the previous city council meeting. Either prior to and subsequent to that meeting, we have been very involved and are aware of the kinds of things that are going to be presented to the city council, and it is the intention of my client to comply with all of those requirements. So the waiting for a December 13th day for it to be enacted would not be an issue.
Okay. Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom wanting to speak?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, no one in the audience wants to speak anymore? No one on Zoom? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and action on the recommendation that we approve resolution 2322, which would extend and continue 13-12 CUP to December the 4th, 2023. Sounds like you're getting ready to make a motion then. I will. I'll make a motion that we continue the approval resolution of 2322, December 4th. Second.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Can we call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jamu.
Aye.
And Chairperson Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you. We'll see you on December the 4th. Now, back to our rest of our agenda, which isn't much. New business, we have none. Public meetings, we have none scheduled. Unfinished business, none. Matters initiated by planning commission and staff, none. Reports, any commissioners, anything to report?
No, sir.
Anything? Nothing. Chairperson, he has nothing, I'm pretty sure. City attorney, anything to report on?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. City staff, public, nothing? Nothing for engineering, okay?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, I see you're busy over there at the park. Over at Smyrna Park, things are, things are busy. Yeah, they started destruck, tearing it down. Yeah, they started destruck, tearing it down.
And the Smyrna's
Could, could you please take it outside so we can finish?
Yes, sir, uh, Smyrna Park started, uh, this Tuesday. Uh, we erected a temporary fence and we cut down some of the trees that were scheduled, uh, according to the plan. Um, we will be completing this project, uh, in the spring of next year, and, uh, we hope for the best weather.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm sure that's part of your, part of your wishes.
That's right. It's the weather that will hold us up. Otherwise, uh, we've we've identified the construction area with a construction fence and all other activities that are scheduled in the park can go on, uh, as we proceed with construction. We just would, uh, hope that the, uh, the community that choosing the skateboard park would allow us to, uh, perform the work that has to be done there without, uh, disrupting the temporary fence.
I think you're too late.
Yeah.
I walked through that area and I noticed two days ago that the skateboard park was quite busy, shall we say.
Yes, yes, it is.
So it's a, it's a resource that they love it, so.
Yeah, we're, we're also in the process of, uh, awarding the contract, uh, to a lowest bidder on Ochoa Park, so that contract, uh, will be, uh, put through on the next council meeting and then, uh, breaking ground would, uh, occur sometime after that. Probably sometime in early November. So we'll have both parks in construction at the same time.
Very good. It always amazes me how busy you are.
Yeah.
How much is going on in the city?
I can report on a couple of other design projects that we're doing, uh, the hatch road transmission line is at sixty percent, uh, probably next week. They're doing pot holding on hatch just to confirm, uh, interferences. Also, this transmission line will provide the, um, the water from the new river bluff tank to our water transmission system. And it'll increase the pressure on the north end of hatch, north of hatch, so that'll be a bonus to most residents. Um, also, the water quality will improve as well as, because we're mixing some of the Twomey River water with our our well water, so it'll be a great benefit for water quality. Also, we have, uh, the design continuing in a couple of neighborhoods on a water main replacement projects. And we started our pavement, uh, maintenance projects, uh, in, uh, I guess it was kickoff on Tuesday and, uh, we worked on the, the pavement, uh, yes, uh, we're putting down some asphalt in the wastewater treatment plant, and then we started doing saw cutting in some neighborhoods in the city to repair cracks. So that, that's coming along as well, so. Yeah, a lot of things are going on. That CIP list that I gave you, uh, a couple of months ago is, uh, we're just checking off the boxes and we're working on. That would be my report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate knowing that. Like to keep up. I guess we're done then, so we will adjourn to our next meeting, which is scheduled for October the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting adjourned.